Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to day five of the Asian Oncology Society Conference. To open the AOS Special Session, please welcome Professor Kazuhiko Yoshida, AOS Secretary General, Director of Gifu University Hospital and Professor and Chairman of the Department of Surgical Oncology at Gifu University.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kazuhiko Yoshida, Gifu University, Japan. It is my great pleasure to chair this session. So today, AOS Special Keynote Session on Emerging Technologies in Cancer, which is a roster of distinguished lectures. I will introduce them all at once at this time. Okay, let me introduce the first speaker, Professor Han Kan Yan, who is the Jem-Pok Kim Memorial Lectures and will speak on the vision of precision surgery. Professor Yan, the Chief Division of GI Surgery, Department of Surgery and Cancer Research Institute, Seoul National University Hospital, Seoul National University College of Medicine, Korea. He is also the AOS Secretary General. He's involved in several large-scale RCTs for gastric cancer treatment, Korean PI for regatta study, and investigators of classic trials, class trials, as well as Korean PIs of Phase II study of role of neoadjuvant imatinim treatment in large gastric gists. His translational research interest, gastric carcinogenesis, DDS, familial gastric cancer, and biomarkers. Our next speaker is Professor Wee Bin Lee, who will talk on intra-fecal chemotherapy for CSF metastatic tumors. He is Chief, Beijing Tianjin Hospital, Capital Medical University, and China AOS Scientific Committee Member. He is Director, Department of New Oncology, Beijing Tianjin Hospital, Associate Chair, Oncology System CMU in China, Director of Chinese Anti-Cancer Association, Vice Chair Clinical Research Specialty Committee, China Chromatological Innovation and Research Development Association, COO of glioma specialty committee, Chinese Medical Doctor Association Member, Editing Committee for Cancer Biology and Medical Puller of Law Society in Medicine, UK. His research is on the chemotherapy targeted and immunotherapy for glioma, one of the leading scientists on the clinical trials for glioma in China. Our next speaker, third speaker, who will talk on advanced radiotherapy with carbon irons is Professor Tatsuya Ono. He is Medical Director, Gunma University Graduate School of Medicine, Japan. He served as a course director or international training course on carbon iron radiotherapy held at NIRS and Gunma University since 2012. Course Director of Clinical Workshop Program, 3D Image Guided Adaptive Brachia Therapy for Gynecology. Lecturer of IAEA Regional Training Course on Gynec cancer, Federation of Asian Organization for Radiation Oncology Estro Meets Asia. He is core member of Japan Carbon Iron Radiation Oncology Study Group, J-Claws, since 2014, Delegate of Japanese Society for Radiation Oncology Gastro, and Vice Chairman of the Patico Therapy Committee for Gastro. External Advisory Board Member of Shanghai Proton and Heavy Iron Treatment Center and the Korea Heavy Iron Medical Accelerator Project in Korea. Official Member of Radiation Oncology Project of the Fall of Nuclear Corporation in Asia, supported by Japanese government. And our next speaker, fourth speaker, who will talk on multi-p parametric MRI for oncologic evaluation is Professor John Min Lee. He is Chief Radiologist, Abdominal Imaging and Non-Bascular Intervention Section, Institute of Radiation Medicine, Seoul National University, Korea. He is Member of Korean and International Radiological Societies, Korean Radiological Society, Korean Society of Medical Ultrasound, Korea Society of Abdominal Radiology, Korean Society for Magnetic Resources in Medicine, and Korean Society of Interventional Radiology, Korean Society Ultrasound in Medicine, and Korean Society of Gastric Intology, Korean Liver Cancer Study, and also European Congress of Radiology, European Society of Gastrointestinal and Abdominal Radiology, International Society for Magnetic Resources Medicine, Asian Pacific Association for Study for Liver, International Liver Cancer Association, Asian Society of Abdominal Radiology, Radiological Society for North America. So ladies and gentlemen, here now are the AOS Special Sessions of today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for your kind introduction. And it is my great honor to give a JP Kim Memorial Lecture at the First Annual Congress of AOS. Professor JP Kim, he was a pioneer and also an important role for the gastric cancer surgery. This slide was from Professor Aiko, Professor Emeritus of Kagoshima University, among the pioneers in gastric cancer surgery, Nishi, Okajima, and Mariyama. And Professor JP Kim was elected as honorary fellow of American College of Surgeons in 1993, also honorary fellow of American Surgical Association, and so on. And he was quite diligent for dignity, with a long, strong leadership and sincere friendship. But most of all, he really promote international oncology collaborations within of international boundaries. This is what Professor JP Kim promoted. And in Asia, we did not have a strong oncology leadership. That's why we have Asian Oncology Society, which inaugurated last year in Fukuoka. Here's Professor No, Professor Sachi, and Professor Yoshida, Second General of AOS. And we had Launching Council Members of AOS. Today's my topic would be beyond MIS, Minimum Invasive Surgery: Evolution of a Surgical Sciences. This is gastric cancer specimen, typical lymph node dissection radical. And here's a primary cancer. This is lymphatic metastasis viewed by microscope. So this is how GI solid tumor gastric cancer progress. And depending on the extent, we may do local endoscopics because of dissection, limited surgery, or extensive surgery. At Seoul National, this is actually Professor JP Kim operated on gastric cancer in 1975. He had done more than 10,000 cases. And now, or with my junior faculty, last year, we reached 30,000 gastric cancer operation in a single institute. The number is not important, but more important would be quality. So this is why we maintain good database. This was in 1986. Professor JP Kim was conducting data collection with juniors. And with the database, we have prospective complication data, pathology data, and survivor data. Eventually, we will have genomic data, which will be very important in our future practice. And for gastric cancer surgery, as you are all aware, extensive D2 dissection is important. But also during our cancer surgery, we have to pay attention for the potential cancer contamination. And please refer this recent commentary, Lancet Oncology. And it emphasized not only the extent of node dissection, but also how to do, namely, avoid contamination is important. This is laparoscopic surgery. Actually, minimum invasive rather than minimum access for gastric or any surgery compared to open surgery would be just this interface. Surgical principles are the same. When we had first laparoscopic surgery, we first trained ourselves using large and for the skills. And then we conducted clinical trials to prove potential benefit by laparoscopic surgery. In all these stage, we did Class 01, confirmed a non-inferity. The survivors are same, but complications less with laparoscope. And for advanced cancer, last month, we finally published the JCO. Dr. Han Sang Ho is PIO, but this trial showed the same three-year survival with less complication by laparoscope. So this is last year at Seoul National. You see the most cases are early stage. And among this early stage, laparoscopic surgery is 93%. But advanced cases, only like 40% in stage 3. Why? Because we had Class 01 study already published. That's why we do most cases by laparoscope. But advanced cases, we use open surgery because Class 02 was not available. But as I mentioned, last month, we have a Class 2 result. So from next year, we will have a much higher minimum access surgery for advanced cancer 2. So this is a very important message by, from Professor Masaki Kitajima. He emphasized our surgical skill should be supported by science. That means scientific data, evidence. That's emphasis on ethics. Laparoscopic surgery, we use rigid instrument. And so we adopt that articulating robot arm technology into our surgical procedure. So here's one example of our laparoscopic robotic gastrectomy for advanced case. So we did, I did total mentactomy. For your view, limited time, I played a video quite fast. So separation of a mesocolon and identification of our right gastric port vein. For this procedure, we are using ultrasonic device. Actually, this is not articulating device. Cleaning up along the great posterior side of the duodenum and move to the anterior surface, go for the right gastric artery and the dissection along the hepatic artery proper, right gastric artery, and then you see the portal vein, and so on. So this is a kind of a remote control surgery, remote access surgery. And but until now, the benefit of robotic surgery over the laparoscope has not been proven. That's why we have a very limited robotic surgery out of minimum access surgery. And this is again emphasis of ethics in our practice. But the reason why we did not see any benefit over conventional laparoscope would be we use the same device. So articulating energy device at this moment is quite bulky. But upcoming thinner articulating device may change the patient outcome. Beyond MIS, here's lymphatics. You see the lymphatic channel by near infrared. And this is old version. Now newer version of near infrared camera can show the variety of extensive lymphatic channel. Even this lymphatic channel can be visualized by superimposed view. Here's a short video of how we can apply this near infrared camera for our surgery. You see the infrapilotic area. We can easily see the lymphatics. So during this dissection, we can avoid potential injury to patient size such as pancreas or a large vessel. And you see the lymphatic along the infrapilotic area. This is along the right gastric artery area. And also, we can use this kind of a volume rendering to identify vessels. And by the way, precision medicine is a practice choose a proper treatment of the patient based on a genetic difference, so called personalized medicine. And we bring our gastric cancer tissue into laboratory and establish patient-derived xenograph. And with the general graft, this is a, for example, PET scan of a human patient. Gastric cancers are sometimes very strong, but very low in some cases. So we, sometimes we are wasting resources. So using this PDx, we can tell that positive, strong PDx versus non-positive data. So with a correlation with the genomic background of this human gastric cancer profile, we can formulate prediction model. And also prediction of a chemosensitivity using PDx. Here's how the patient's response. And based on a four-fox response to chemotherapy agent in PDx, because we already have a genomic background of this PDx, we can formulate some panel to predict chemosensitivity. So using this kind of some cancer-specific target, we may lighting up our cancer tissues during our cancer surgery. There are different targets available in gastric, just you name it, for example, HER2. Here, anti-HER2 antibody tagged with the fluorescence dye. We can visualize HER2 positive tumor. Here's another view by near infrared camera. So in the near future, we may see the lymphatic channel by ICG, but metastasis by different wavelength. So first, access for gastric cancer surgery would be more minimum access surgery, opt for T4A and 2. And regarding a robotic gastrectomy, which is feasible, but not yet better than conventional laparoscope. And a lymph node dissection can be assisted by near infrared system. And in the near future, hopefully, when new patients comes, first, we will take a tissue for pathology confirmation, but also genomic profile. Based on genomic profile, we can choose PET scan or not. Also, based on this genomic profile, we may choose dissection, also using anti-cancer tracer patient. Or we can visualize metastatic area for selective dissection. Also, additional instrument chemotherapy can be chosen based on the genomic profile too. I would like to thank my collaborators, and this is my team. And in year 2022, we will have second international conference of AOS in Seoul. Thank you very much.
I'm pleasure to give this presentation at AOS. Dear professors and actors, I want to share some information about inter-thicker chemotherapy for CSF dissemination GPM. I'm from Department of New York College, Beijing Tianjin Hospital, Capital Medical University. As we know, CSF dissemination of glioma, the incidence of GBM, CSF dissemination, was 20 to 28%. Its survivor has 2.8 to 7 months. I'm from the NCC and GANAI. The first choice for recurrent GBM is clinical trials. It means it is hard to find a good therapy, current therapy for current GBM. Inter-thicker chemotherapy is recommend for many major metastatic name disease and informa breast cancers by NCC and GANAI. As we know, inter-thicker chemotherapy used to treat recurrent glioma with a very good outcome. One of the reason is this drugs can pass BBB, increase the local drug concentration in brain tumor. So far, we have two drugs for inter-thicker chemotherapy as MTX and sertrabine. In my team, our research showed that the both drugs could inhibit glioblastoma progression. The first anti-tumor effects of sertrabine of CSF metastasis of GBM by targeting the PI3K pathway. In Viva study also shows this drug can inhibit tumor growth and reduce this tumor. MTX also can inhibit tumor growth and reduce the tumor value in Viva study. Since the year of 2018, my team treated nine cases of CSF disseminated GBM with EP plus inter-thicker chemotherapy. From our data, the longest survivor after CSF metastasis is over 25 months. The shortest overall survivor is 6.7 months. And the median overall survivor is 15.6. It's much, it's much better than 2.8 to 7 months. Now, I want to show you a case of in the hospital. This is 48 years old female. Her surgery was in 2015 August. Pathology shows GBM, followed by the concurrent radio chemotherapy and TMZ treatment. But in 2019, an MI imaging shows CSF dissemination. As the picture, this is before we treat. We can see the CSF dissemination. We did the treatment. After two months of the treatment, we can find its clear. It's much better. We also got the CSF test. We find the CSF protein is keep going down. Every week, we got the test. And symptoms relieved. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ono. I'm radiation oncologist. My major is carbon iron radiotherapy for various types of cancer, especially X-ray resistant cancers. So I'd like to talk about very advanced radiotherapy with carbon iron beams today. Thank you very much. Okay. Radiotherapy is an essential component of cancer treatment. For treating tumor with radiation, X-rays, gamma rays, or electron beams have been used as conventional radiotherapy. On the other hand, interest of particle beam therapy using protons and carbon ions is growing recently. What is an advantage of carbon iron radiotherapy compared with X-rays? First, physical property is better in carbon iron beams. As shown on the left, X-ray dose exponentially decreases with the depth. In carbon iron radiotherapy, entrust dose is lower and distar dose dramatically stops immediately after target lesion. Thus, carbon iron beams achieve better dose conformity to the target. So this is X-ray dose distribution. And this is carbon iron dose distribution. And this is less So this is X-ray dose distribution, and this is carbon ion dose distribution, and this is less toxic lesion. In the clinical situation, multiple beams are used to improve those conformity to the target. This slide shows a comparison of those distribution between carbon iron radiotherapy and SVRT or IMRT using X-rays. For lung cancer, liver cancer, and prostate cancer. High dose localization is similar between two modalities, however. Low to medium dose volume in healthy tissue is significantly lower in carbon iron radiotherapy. Here, there's such dosometric advantage results in the improved clinical outcomes. I'd like to show an example in stage one non-small cell lung cancer patient who usually have lung dysfunctions. So this table shows the incidence of radiation pneumonitis in grade two or worse among radiotherapy types. In SVRT with X-rays, the incidence ranges nine to twenty-eight percent. While the corresponding instance in carbon iron radiotherapy was below five percent. Okay, thus the incidence of pneumonitis is clearly lower in carbon iron radiotherapy. So uh radiation therapy works by damaging the DNA of cancer cells. A low LED radiation like X-rays commonly cause sparsely ionizing and single-strand DNA blade. For cancer cell deaths, DNA double-strand blade by two heat is essential. However, cells have mechanism for repairing single-strand DNA damage, and some of them may survive even after radiation. High linear energy transfer LED beam in carbon iron radiotherapy induce densely ionizing. And therefore, DNA double-strand place which becomes irreversible cell damage dependent tree or cell cycle phase or oxygenation. More so than lower LED radiation such as X-rays. In carbon iron radiotherapy, short course treatment is also available. For prostate cancer, therapy flactions treatment over three weeks is standard regimen. For lung or liver cancers, it takes less than one week. Interruption of normal life of the patient is minimized, and we can treat high-volume patients. So this is a trend of patient number at GUMA University. So far, more than four thousand patients have received carbon iron radiotherapy. Annually, more than seven hundred patients can be treated this year. So uh indicated cancers in carbon iron radiotherapies are listed here. So bone and soft tissue tumors, head and neck, lung, liver, prostate, pancreas, left and GYN, and oligometastasis. So today, I'd like to show some clinical outcomes, including nationwide retrospective studies for. Uh these three topics. The first is inoperable bone and soft tissue tumors. Inoperable bone and soft tissue tumors known as X-ray resistant tumors. Osteosarcoma of the pelvic bone and spine. And cordoma of the sacrum and undifferentiated from preomortem sarcoma. In the lateral peritoneal spaces. So all these X-ray resistant tumors were controlled for many years. This table shows a comparison of survivor between traditional X-ray therapy and carbon iron radiotherapy. In sacral cordoma, pelvic osteosarcoma, pelvic chondrosarcoma, lateral peritoneal soft tissue sarcoma. Carbon iron radiotherapy showed favorable outcomes. This patient had an adenocystic carcinoma of the right maxillary sinus invading to the orbital cavity. This tumor is usually X-ray resistant. So yellow circle shows a very steep dose gradation that staring the left optic nerves. After treatment, there was no local recurrence and left visual function was preserved. So one met analysis demonstrated that. Chirps particle radiotherapy with proton or carbon ions achieved significant three better survival and local regional control. In patient with paranasial sinus and nasal cavity tumors. Okay, next, this patient had a pancreatic head cancer. The tumor invaded the SMA over one eighty degree. After carbon iron radiotherapy, abnormal updates on FVG PET CT disappeared. But the tumor size didn't change without enhancement. So this patient had a surgery and a pathological CR was proved. At this table shows survival in locally advanced pancreatic cancers treated with gemcitopin with or without radiotherapy. So treatment includes gemcitopin, X-ray plus gemcitopin, and carbon iron radiotherapy. The median survival time after carbon iron radiotherapy was around twenty-five months. And the two-year overall survival rate was over fifty percent, so which looks very promising. So recent development of systemic therapy is very hopeful. Especially in combination with carbon iron radiotherapy for such locally advanced pancreatic cancers. Because bulky tumor control is usually difficult by systemic therapy alone. And intensive treatment has an important role to produce long-term survival. Now, carbon iron radiotherapy is still limited medical resource in the worldwide. Only thirteen facilities are in operation, and the most of them locate in Asia. So we should cooperate among the centers in order to make high level of evidence such as uh phase three clinical trials. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, dear colleagues. First of all, I'd like to thank the organizing committee of Asian Oncology Society. It is truly a great honor and privilege to be here today. I am Dr. Jung Min Lee from Seoul, Korea, working at Seoul National University Hospital. In this session on emerging technology in cancer, in the next fifteen minutes, I would like to talk about. Multi-parametric MRI for oncologic evaluation. Let me first discuss imaging techniques for evaluation of oncologic patients. For example, in patients with abdominal cancers. MDCT is currently the worldwide imaging modality of choice for evaluation of disease extent. Uh MRI can be used as a secondary diagnostic test or a problem-solving tool. PET CT or PET MR has a complementary role for tumor staging. T or MRI. Then what is the role of imaging in evaluation of cancer patients? Traditionally, the role of imaging is diagnosis and staging. However, in recent years, the role of imaging in evaluation of oncologic patients has been changing. Mainly because of developments of surgical device and techniques. Several new therapeutic drugs such as anti-angiogenic drugs or immunotherapy drugs. Uh furthermore, uh new uh radiation treatments uh has been have been developed. Including SVRT and particle beam therapy. Indeed, evaluation of therapeutic effect of systemic treatment and restaging is getting more important. Uh and furthermore, uh precise preoperative assessment of functional reserve of background organs is also important. Therefore, multi-parametric evaluation of perfusion, cellularity, or cellular function is necessary. Here you can see the comparison of strengths and weaknesses of contrast enhanced CT scan. And contrast enhanced MRI scan for evaluation of oncologic patients. As you know, a CT has better temporal and spatial resolution than MRI. Uh on the contrary, MR has better softish contrast and multi-parametric capability. You can see a good example of MR having better softish contrast than CT. In these patients with sequel cancer, CT demonstrate a small, low attenuated lesion in the liver. Uh however, it is difficult to differentiate cyst versus metastasis. However, on T two weighted imaging, due to its high signal intensity, we can easily make a diagnosis of cyst. In this, another example of sixty-two-year-old male patients with abdominal pain and elevated amilase. Uh CT demonstrate the diffuse swelling of the pancreas and cyst in the pancreas head. Uh which may provide the diagnosis of acute pancreatitis with pseudocyst. However, on MR, especially on diffusion-weighted imaging, you can see diffusion restriction. And also you can see a fluid containing lesion in the center of the uh disease. Later, this lesion was confirmed as pancreatic adeno carcinoma. So due to this kind of information on cellularity from diffusion-weighted imaging, we can make a correct diagnosis of. Furthermore, according to recent publications on imaging modality for liver metastasis. Uh MRI with hepatobiliary contrast agent is much more accurate than CT or ECCM MRI. Uh in these patients with pancreatic cancer, although CT failed to detect a small liver metastasis. Uh EOB-enhanced MRI showed the small tiny liver metastasis. With this improved detection of liver metastasis by get EOB MR. Uh we can change the therapeutic plan from surgical resection to systemic chemotherapy. Uh as we know, accurate staging is the key element to select appropriate treatment in cancer patient. So what kind of information can multi-parametric MRI provide for us? It can provide information regarding in vivo physiologic and metabolic information. It uses functional parameters like flow, tissue oxygenation, dynamic perfusion, diffusion stiffness, and cellular function. The result of those functional imaging studies can be expressed quantitatively and qualitatively. MR allows multi-parametric approach easily. For example, proton density fat fraction can be used for evaluating hepatic steatosis. Diffusion-weighted imaging can provide information about cellular density. MR elastography can provide information about tissue stiffness. DCE MRI can provide information about the tumor vascularity. And with hepatobiliary contrast agent, we can evaluate liver function and also hepatobiliary. Here you can see a summary of advantages of multi-parametric MRI in oncologic evaluation. MPMR imaging explores different functional and molecular information of abdominal malignancies in a single examination. And the combination of these different quantitative parameters can help gains insight toward the tumor biology. And measurement of changes in tumor characteristics with treatment can help in therapy monitoring, radiotherapy planning, and drug development. The first example of MPMRI is MR proton density fat fraction. Uh it requires only one breath old exam, but provides a very accurate quantitative measurement for hepatic steatosis. Therefore, it can be used as a good diagnostic test for cash uh after systemic chemotherapy. Another commonly used example of MPMRI is diffusion-weighted imaging. Where can we apply diffusion-weighted imaging? In principle, in human body, cellular membrane is the major tissue to inhibit diffusion of a water molecule. As diffusion-weighted imaging can sensitively detect this diffusion process of water in the tissue. We can use diffusion-weighted imaging as a surrogate marker of tissue cellularity. For example, tumor with high cellularity can show restricted diffusion. But tissue with necrosis can show increased diffusion. Therefore, diffusion-weighted imaging is widely used for evaluation of treatment response. Um and also the detection of malignant tumors. Uh furthermore, it can be used as a map for tumor metastasis similar to PET. Next example of MPMRI. In addition, tumor stiffness can be measured by MR elastography. And it could be associated with tumor mechanical property, including intestinal pressure. Uh therefore, tumor stiffness values may provide prognostic values of some malignancies. Including HCC or pancreatic adeno carcinoma. According to our study, higher tumor stiffness provides worst prognosis. In addition, perfusion imaging is another key component of MPMRI. Uh what is perfusion imaging? Uh it is the imaging which permits quantitative assessment of perfusion such as amount of blood, velocity of blood. And extraction from intravascular and extravascular space. Perfusion imaging can visualize tumor-related angiogenesis. And therefore, can be used for prediction of outcome and also for early assessment of treatment response. However, it requires high temporal resolution imaging less than three to. Uh with the recent development of free breathing T one weighted imaging, which is radial gradient technique. Uh having motion insensitivity, we can obtain both dynamic imaging and perfusion imaging simultaneously. As this technique allows imaging reconstruction with different temporal resolution. So using this high temporal resolution imaging set, we can obtain perfusion map. And also with this relatively high spatial resolution imaging, we can use the. You can obtain the uh anatomic information as well. The next component I'd like to address of MPMRI is hepatobiliary MR contrast data. Approximately fifty percent of injected get EOB DTPA can be obtained by hepatocyte via OATP transporters. And excreted into bind into the bile duct via C mode transporter. As a homogeneous and strong hepatic parenchymal enhancement could be achieved. we can detect a tiny liver malignancies. And also during hepatocarcinal genesis, OATP transporters gradually decreases. Therefore, we can detect only hepatocellular carcinoma much more sensitive than CT or ultrasound. Furthermore, GET. Another interesting application of EOB MR is assessment of liver function. Here you can see two similar cases of large hepatocellular carcinoma. These patients were perfectly okay after surgical resection. However, this bottom case developed liver failure after surgical resection. On hepatobiliary phase imaging. Last but not least, PET MRI can combine multi-parametric imaging capability of MRI and metabolic information of PET. Here you can see two examples showing the value of PET MRI. In these patients with pancreatic adenoschemos carcinoma, after CCLT, PET MRI can provide excellent information regarding therapeutic response. We can obtain anatomic information from dynamic imaging. And we can also obtain the information regarding cellularity from diffusion-weighted imaging and also get metabolic information from PET. On pathology, there was no viable tumor. In addition, with a new PET tracer, we can have both improved sensitivity and specificity for detection of prostate cancer metastasis on PET MRI. Here are my take-home message. MR imaging provides multiple imaging biomarkers for assessing abdominal malignancies, which can be integrated in a comprehensive protocol tailored to the clinical problem. These techniques at various stages of clinical adoption, as many are technically demanding and lack sufficient standardization and still require further validation. The potential of all these techniques is enhanced if an MP-MRI approach is used to assess tumor behavior. Thank you very much for your kind attention.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Katsuki Roshiro. It is my great honor and pleasure to chair this important session, AOS Special Keynote Sessions. First of all, I would like to congratulate all the speakers, speakers from Korea, Professor Han Kang Yan, and also Wei Bin Li from China and from Tetsuya Ono, Japan, and also Professor John Ming Lin from Korea. And also, I would like to express my sincere appreciation for all the participants, audience. And we have already several questions. In this session, we have 15 minutes to discuss about this special lectures. So first of all, I would like to ask Professor Tetsuya Ono. Thank you very much and congratulations for your wonderful talk. We have one question from the audience. Can I ask you now?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Please let us know the difference from proton therapy and carbon protein therapy. How can we use differently?
Okay. The biological property is different between carbon iron beams and proton beams. Carbon iron beams, due to the high LET component, DNA double-strung rate commonly occurs, which result in the stronger biological effectiveness. So we can expect the efficacy for X-ray resistant tumors or proton-resistant tumors. That's my answer.
Okay, great. And the carbon iron therapy is now very, start to be popular, but very expensive to.
Yes, right, right.
So where is the most difficult hurdle to spread in all Asian areas?
Oh, thank you very much. The reason of the bigger machine, big facility, includes the accelerator system is still live. So if we develop more advanced technology like a more advanced accelerator system if we have, so the size and cost will be reduced. So it can be disseminated in the Asian countries.
Good news to hear. Very nice. So, okay. Probably several speakers will ask some questions. So Professor John Ming Lin, you are also the radiologist. Do you have any questions? Or Professor Ono, or do you have any questions to Professor Li?
Oh. Can I ask to Professor Li?
Yes, please.
For cancer imaging.
Yes.
Yes.
In my understanding, the functional imaging is very promising. So what do you recommend to radiation oncologists about the functional property by MRI? You already showed the diffusion or perfusion or elastic function or something, which is the best?
I think the, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I think the diffusion-weighted imaging is the most commonly used functional imaging modality, as it doesn't require long acquisition time and also it doesn't require any contrast injection. Therefore, and also many MR vendors provide diffusion-weighted imaging as routine sequences for body and neuro MRI imaging. And in oncologic imaging fields, diffusion-weighted imaging has become a routine sequence for evaluation of tumors. So I think the, when you want to evaluate tumor response to radiation treatment or when you want to predict outcome of the tumor to oncologic treatment, I think diffusion-weighted imaging can provide valuable information because it basically provide information about the cellularity. And also if you use a more complex post-processing tool such as IVIM, intravoxel, incoherent imaging technique, you may also acquire some microperfusion information from diffusion-weighted imaging. So I strongly recommend you to use diffusion-weighted imaging.
Oh, very interesting. Recently, MRI combined with linear accelerator is commercially available. So some leading center can buy such a very sophisticated X-ray machine.
Yes, yes. It's looks like a very promising and interesting combination. The standard-of-world imaging modality and standard-of-world radiation treatment modality are combined. And basically, MR can provide guidance, excellent guidance for radiation treatment. And also it can provide insight to monitoring of the tumor response. So I believe you may enjoy the fruitful combination of the two imaging modalities.
Yes.
Yes, even for surgeons, MRI is a very, very good tool to detect liver metastasis. Previously, we say that there was no liver metastasis, but with the MRI image, we have many small nodules which could not be detected by CT. So I agree with the MRI, very useful. Li, Professor Li? One question from Dr. Hadi Luna.
Yes.
What are the advantages of MRI over PET CT? Are there historical tumors which can be seen clearly with MRI versus PET? Can you answer it?
Yes, I think the MRI can provide a better diagnostic accuracy than PET CT for liver metastasis. As you said, nowadays, we are using hepatocyte-specific contrast agent, GET EOB DTPA, and also diffusion-weighted imaging. By combining diffusion-weighted imaging and hepatobiliary contrast agent enhanced MRI, MR can detect very minute liver metastasis very sensitively. For PET CT, I think at least 5 to 10 millimeter diameter tumors, tumor size is necessary to detect the liver metastasis. And furthermore, there are some histological variant which may not show increased metabolic activity on PET CT, while MR can detect such kind of tumors based on soft tissue contrast. So I think MR definitely can add additional benefit to PET CT. Of course, PET CT can be used as a one-stop shopping tool with a contrast injection while obtaining PET information. But the basic advantage of PET MR could be dependent on advantages of MR over CT in oncologic evaluation. But the problem of PET MR is a high cost.
Okay. Professor Wei Bin Li probably is not yet on lives, but Professor John Ming Li, MRI is also useful for diagnosing meningitis carcinoma tumors. Is it effective, is the MRI useful for the treatment result of CSF dissemination?
I missed you in only part of your question. Would you repeat your question one more time?
Meningitis carcinoma. Professor Wei Bin Li from China has demonstrated clearly that the intrathecal chemotherapy is useful. By MRI.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I am not a specialist for neuroimaging. I am a.
I'm a surgeon.
I cannot provide a good answer for your question.
Okay, Professor Ono, any comments or?
Just a few words to Professor Li. Seoul National University will have a carbon iron facility in Busan. Do you know?
Yeah, I know.
So hope to see you again.
Ah, okay.
And Professor Han Kang Yan is also working with Professor Li, is it? Am I correct? So he is also presented very nicely. So do you collaborate with the AI or image-guided surgery or? Do you collaborate?
Actually, he developed his own research team. So I do not have direct collaborative relationship with him regarding AI-guided surgery.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. You have a very big hospitals and many people.
Yes.
Our goal as a surgeon is the autosurgery, like an autodrive for safety. So the virtual reality images and we want to use such kind of things. So radiologists are very important for us. Also, Professor Ono.
Yes.
One more question concerning the carbon therapy. Do you combine with chemotherapy with that heavy metal carbon therapy?
For example, for pancreatic cancer, we concurrently combine with gemcitabine or PS1 and followed by systemic chemotherapy again. And for, yeah, because Goma University is a university hospital, so one of our advantage is to develop such a new combination, carbon ion radiotherapy with existing other modality, including surgery.
Yes. So you have a new knife.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. Oh, now Professor Yan, you are on now. We are discussing about.
Hello, Professor. Yes, Professor Yoshida, sorry, my operation today, the second one. It went longer than I expected. Please see my specimen here. Right, I don't know whether, okay.
I can see you.
Okay, can you see? The specimen? No, the problem is we have quite a long enough margin proximal, but the problem here is a look like.
More than three centimeters.
Small potential other organ cancer. So we are now waiting for the frozen. So I'm sorry, I missed the first part of the discussion.
The tumor is located in the greater curvature and it looks like a fully differentiated adenocarcinoma of the stomach.
Wow. Professor Yoshida, you have microscope in your eyes.
No, no, no. So we enjoyed your presentation very much. So I just talked with Li that our goal is the safety drive you have presented, safety surgery. So what is your project now? From in your team?
Project for.
For a surgery?
For.
For education.
Oh, for education. Oh, no.
Using. Image-guided surgery.
Yes, actually, our current, yes, we are, actually today, this case, I also used a near-infrared camera for ICG injection. But the problem here in Korea is ICG injection for lymphatic identification in gastric cancer is not permitted yet by FDA, Korean FDA. So this patient, simply patient agreed to perform and that is a demonstration or clinical setting, clinical trial setting. So that's the limitation, but still, this is a potential future application. I mean, as I presented, ICG is at this moment, at least it's good for surgeons who have limited experience with D2D section. Because Professor Yoshida, you are D2D section, you don't need ICG. But for surgeons who have limited and it visualize lymphatic channels. So that's one upcoming, our educational purpose.
Thank you very much, Professor Yan. Time is nearly up, so.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Thank you very much for all the participants and all the great speakers. And I hope you in good health and see you after COVID-19. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you.
Thank you, Professor Yoshida.
Bye-bye.
Sayonara.